Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bett North Committee, the whole meeting. Today is Monday, April 3rd, 2023. It's 5 o'clock PM. Thank you all for joining us. We're going to start with some consent agenda items. Consent F and G. For that, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Hunt. Mark, you have the floor.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'm going to just warn you in advance that allergy season has hit, and I've taken all the legal medications I can. But I may need to take a break. Your Honor, Case 2310 is Legacy Corner Southeast is a final plat. It's approximately eight acres, plus or minus, on the southeast corner of Middle Road and 53rd Avenue. This final plat is brought to by Ryan Fick, Century Heights Limited Partners. It does involve a special use permit that has previously been granted for a convenience store and gas station with more than four pumps. Actually, 10 pumps is the allowed amount per the action of the Board of Adjustment on 39. It is near the roundabout at Middle Road 53rd, just to give you a little orientation here. Our future land use designation is neighborhood commercial, and the development and the plat, if you will, the proposed development does align with that neighborhood commercial use. And all four corners of this roundabout are in the same neighborhood commercial future land use. The existing zoning is C2, which does allow by special use, a large gas station, which I mentioned previously. It has been zoned this since 1996. It was actually zoned in conjunction with the Century Heights development that you see right here. And that's important because there are some aspects of both plats that I want to point out to you. As we go forward here. It's going to be a three lot subdivision. Two lots for development and one lot for drainage. Lot 1 is the northern piece, a little over three acres. And Lot 2, also a little over three acres, more of a T shape. And then Lot A is in that far corner there. That's your detention area on the lot. Right now, the only proposed development is on Lot 1. Lot 2 will likely be developed in the future, but there's not a proposal out there at this point. Lot 1 will be the site of a Quickstar gas station. I'm going to show you a concept plan of that here in just a second. I would note there's a 30-foot access easement here through Lot 2 to get access. And you'll also eventually have a curb cut here that will be approved with the forthcoming site plan, approximately in that location, of course, that lines up with the current intersection. Here's a concept plan that was presented in conjunction with the special use permit. It does show the arrangement of a Quickstar gas station with pumps here. Sure how that happened, pumps here. And a car wash here. The car wash placement being farthest from the residential development is what was key with that alignment. Again, a site development plan will have to come through to actually approve that, but the special use permit has been granted. We're going to be adding that curb cut I just mentioned here. And then a lot of screening in this location, which is next to the existing residential development. So you have a row of probably what would be pine trees. And it's worth noting that there is a deeper setback, a deeper backyard and landscape portion to all of these homes that was done at the time of the rezoning in 96 to make sure there was buffer built in on those yards as well. So you're going to have buffering through berm and trees on the existing property, which is already there, and then additional buffering here as that comes forward. Again, we're talking concept plan now. We're really talking about a plat, but I think those are important for the public to understand. We have contemplated that at this time. I think the final note on this slide says you have over 160 feet of separation between pumps and the fence line on that east side. And just to show you that Century Heights plat, you see these long, very deep rear yards. They do have a berm and multiple plantings that are still in place, very mature at this point. One condition on the special use permit was that there was a reversal of the previously approved special use permit for a car wash on the opposite caddy corner. So the next time the Board of Adjustment meets, they will reverse their decision on that case and allow only one large gas station to go. So at our next monthly meeting, Board of Adjustment is going to act on that. Here's a letter from Mr. Fick saying he expects that to happen, and he encourages us to make that action. We do have a positive stack recommendation, and we had a planning and zoning commission that recommended the approval unanimously on March 15th, 2023. Again, we're talking about a final plat here. I kind of went into some site plan stuff because I think it's important for you to understand that, especially with the special use. But just know that we have site development plans that are going to come forward on anything that is developed on Lots 1 and 2. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mark? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question about sidewalks. I know that it's a site development issue, but when they come with the site development, is there a good method of sidewalk access to the Quickstar without walking in traffic?
That's true.
You know, I looked at the plan there, and on the top of the map there, the only way to get from our recreation trail up there along 53rd is to walk in the roadway.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, and it's something that we did at Aldi, is we did require, I think, one or two pedestrian pathways from our trail and sidewalks down into the site. That just helps for a lot of reasons. You don't get the cow pass through our right of way.
Yes.
So aesthetics, tripping, all that kind of stuff. So some of that will be addressed at the site plan phase, but I think it's a fair comment.
And we're looking for a healthy hometown award, so that just fits in. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bill?
Since you showed the concept plan, and I know this is just a plat, I see we have a right-in, right-out access point. Is there ever a right-in, right-out access point we've installed that works very well? And this will go to Mr. Schmidt.
Well, you got a bunch of yellow ballers that we put in a couple different streets.
Yeah, once again, this is just a concept plan. I have met with engineering staff, with Mark as well. When we have a couple of these right-in, right-outs in town, we've had to use those yellow delineators. An example of that is Belmont and Devil's Glen, where we actually have a right-in, right-out coming in out of a Quickstar, where we put those delineators in. We know that we're going to be reconstructing that corridor through there into wider lanes at some point. We do look at putting medians in there. So at this point, we're going to probably allow a right-in, right-out. We'll probably end up having to put those delineators in at this point until we get that road reconstructed to where we envision a median coming down farther south, down towards Crow Creek Road.
I have seen some designs that make somebody making a left-hand turn out of a right-in, right-out very difficult.
Right.
Can we maybe look at one of those designs as opposed to what is what we accepted in the past, just having the angle to turn and the little pork chop in the middle?
Definitely. We'll work with the engineers on that to come up with a design that would be, you know, that would allow a better, maybe better entrance into those right-in, right-outs as you were talking to.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions for Mark? Greg?
Does this restrict at all or change anything on the other three corners?
I'll come to you next, Nick.
I'm sorry.
Does this gas station on this corner, does that have any effect on the other three corners? Like, we're not going to have four gas stations on four corners?
Yes, sir. And maybe I wasn't clear on that point. So what we will do is we will not allow a large gas station, more than four pumps, anywhere else in this development.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
On these four corners. And the approval of that previous gas station on the caddy corner north will be revoked, will be removed at the next Board of Adjustment meeting.
Okay.
Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Mark. So you mentioned, I believe you said, 165 feet from pumps to property line. Do we have an estimate on from property line to actual dwelling? How far that is? Just getting a, wanting to get a better understanding of the total step back from where the dwelling is to where the pumps will be located?
I mean, I would be willing to venture a guess 200. You know, each house has a little bit different profile, depending if they have sun rooms and decks and that type of thing. But if you want me to venture a guess, I'd say 200, but I have not measured that.
Okay. No, that's a fair estimate, and I appreciate that. So the other question that I have regarding the traffic that this is going to bring to the 53rd Middle Road intersection. I know there's been talks around improving the flow of traffic in the traffic circle there. Do we have a timeline on what that would look like? As I know, it's a major concern for some of the residents of the Century Oaks development and certainly residents of Red Fox.
Mark, I can answer that.
Thanks.
Hi, Brett. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, so we have currently a federal grant that we were awarded at the end of last year. That money should become available here in the next couple of months that Brian referenced. That's going to allow us to do all the redesign for Middle Road, including the 53rd Roundabout, basically from where the Forest Row project lets off all the way down to Crow Creek Road. So to answer Bill's question, Bill, that's why we did allow the right-in, right-out, because there will be a median there in the future. Unfortunately, that's probably on the range of a $20 million project by the time you get through that entire corridor. So I can't put a timeframe when we can actually get it built, but getting it designed will hopefully allow us to have a, you know, quote-unquote shovel-ready project and go out for some grants. And we'll continue to explore the surface transportation block grants, the STBG grants that we have available through Bi-State as well.
Thanks, Brett. Decker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to remind the council that this piece of property and that existing 50 feet of additional right-of-way berm that was placed here in 96 was in direct response to the McDonald's development and Falcon development because of all of the controversy that that enambled at the time. And so when this was plotted, we made the developer put that additional 50 feet in for this exact reason, so there would be no question for the folks on Red Fox Road that A, it was zoned commercial, and B, we increased the buffering. And if you recall, they are part of the buffer themselves to the single-family development because our theory was you would have landscape development, multifamily development, that then butts, again, the single-family. So this, there are two solid layers in addition to the layer that the development itself is going to put in with their landscaping. So this is exactly what the council wanted us to do, to not let 53rd and Falcon happen again. And so if there's questions about it, this was the intent from 1996 to today.
Other questions for Mark? Yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. You maybe said this early on, but if you did, I wasn't paying attention. I apologize for that. You only have one curb cut going into that property as it exists now. Is there going to be another one off of 53rd?
There will be a curb cut off of 53rd aligning to the entrance at the north here.
With the one on the north?
Yes, sir. It's just not, because it's not an access easement, it's not shown on the plat. There's no reason to show it on the plat. This one's shown on the plat because it does require an access easement through a adjoining lot.
Okay. And second, down on the bottom outside of your green outline there, where the fire department goes to practice, is that still going to remain a holding pond area?
I believe so. I don't know about the fire department access part, but yeah, that will be, there will be a stormwater detention down in that, Outlet A. Let me get that for you.
Thank you.
Right here is Outlet A, and I think that's what you're referring to. The fire department--
Right there where it says the printed name of the Century Heights.
Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, refresh the council's memory on the tone from P&amp;Z. Was that a unanimous approval?
I believe it was, yeah. I can look back in the minutes, but I believe it was all As.
And any concerns from the neighbors in that area? I mean--
Yeah, there was neighborhood representation there. There's been neighborhood meetings. There's been, you know, done privately by Mr. Fick. Staff did attend those. There was some concerns about development, lights, sound, noise.
Right.
All those kinds of things. Those were heard by the Board of Adjustment, and they voted in favor of the proposal.
Right. And in large measure, because there is quite a distance, quite a buffer in this property, which makes this, I think, maybe it was Jeff Wright or someone recently that said, look, you can, if you're in those homes, you can barely, if at all, see where this would go.
Yeah.
So it's really well suited for the spot?
Right. So staff's analysis was favorable of the special use permit, and that was in part because of the existing topography that was put in place, buffering, trees, plantings. On the other side, not even within the development, in advance of commerce development coming, for sure. So you had to look at that as a foreboding move that they did to try and allow this development to happen in the future. So it's fairly consistent, you know? If you built for it, created a buffer because of it, you know, it's an allowed use at four pumps, and it's a special use at 10 pumps, and I didn't see a problem going to 10 pumps with all that extra space built in.
Right. And I guess in March, P&amp;Z as well, there was the Hopeville, Well and Middle project. There was concerns by the neighborhood that I think maybe is being worked through. But again, it's that reasonable buffer. It's been the comprehensive plan. We're seeing this. I think it fits really well. And just want to be respectful of all the neighbors and their concerns along the way.
Yes, absolutely. And we did take a lot of time to hear them and share their emails and their questions with the P&amp;Z staff or commission.
Yep, thank you.
Scott, and in addition to that, I think one of the things that I'd like to call out here is that Quickstar has been really great working through specifically the orientation of the building itself because, as Mark briefly mentioned in the presentation, we did have the ability to completely shift the orientation of where the car wash is going to be located, which was of primary concern by those residents there. So they've been, they really have taken a focused approach on making sure that they are listening to those residents of Red Fox Road and doing their best to adjust their plan accordingly. So I wanted to call that out as well.
Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. One more quick question, Mark. The access in Lot B, the road access to get in for the gas station, is that going to go away when the roads widen? And will there be--
No, we have--
There won't be access directly into the--
No, that would not go away. So this, even if Bill Rhodes widened, this would still be here, would be set back a little bit farther. But this is private easement, will exist in perpetuity.
It'll always be there. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're back. Any further questions? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda as Consent Item F.
I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have unanimously voted to keep this on consent as Item F tomorrow night. Let's move to Item G for our consideration. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thanks, Your Honor. And I may ask Mr. Morlock to help. I think he's working on some of the bidding documents and things now, but I'll give you kind of the zoning background. Case 2319 at 2255 Middle Road. The landing is a site development plan, pretty exciting project. So we're taking, the city is the applicant here. So we're taking this site and reconstructing a new pool, relocating that pool, and putting an ice feature in it as well. It will also include a lazy river feature, splash pad, ice rink, and some associated buildings. And we have future land use that is park, and we want to use it as a park, so that's consistent. It is also zoned R2. Parks are allowed in R2, just like there's a park there now. So the zoning is consistent as well. So we have alignment with future land use and zoning. There is a slight variance on this property. To make everything fit and provide the required fencing for aquatics, for pools, we have to have some fencing and flat work that would normally be in what is a front yard over here. The Board of Adjustment did approve that variance from 25 feet to 10 feet. Again, the hardship being that we have to, by law, fence off and protect the public from unintended people entering the pool area. And so there is a variance in place as of January 2023 on that, kind of that corner just outlined. The site plan includes vehicle access that was there before, but once you get into the park, your route's going to be a little bit different. So you're going to still use the same access point, but it, once you're in the park, we'll use a circular drive to get people in and out. A lot of drop-offs with the pool. You do have your parking and access through here as well. My screen is not working today. Kind of on that north side, where the existing parking lot is for the old fitness center and additional parking down here. We're at 302 off-street parking spaces, which fits what we need for a pool. You're going to have a lot of, again, drop-off, parent drop-off, parent pickup. So you won't have, most of the users probably won't drive, but you do have plenty of parking here down in this area. Stormwater's provided on the adjacent lot, and we have detention here. A little easier to see looking at the landscape plan, but they will be providing landscaping with our code. So you see a lot of deciduous and conifer trees going in, surrounding the area to provide shade, that park-like atmosphere. So plantings throughout. Certainly kind of an improvement on the existing conditions because we have kind of a lot of open space right now. So that, I think that landscape and buffering will look better and provide more of a park-like atmosphere overall. As far as the amenities go, and I'd invite Kim to jump in too. You've got the Splash Landing. That's number one on the map in front of you. Frozen Landing, which will be our flex ice space, so you can have ice skating in the winter, but in the warmer months, it still has a usable feature. So you can have maybe picnicking, open space, small events, that type of thing. Parking is available at 4 and 6. And 5, I should mention. 5 is the existing parking lot. When you zoom in to just the pool area, these are getting more down to the nitty-gritty of the features. So the shallow pool, lap diving pool is number one on the map in front of you now. Lazy River as number two, a spray ground, you know, zero depth at number three. Number four is a flex building, ice and bathhouse. And five is your community building. Six would be administration. So that's like tickets when you're entering the swimming area, maybe some offices. Seven is the pool equipment building, pumps, chemicals, that type of thing. And nine is your slides and towers. And I think those may be changing a little bit because there's laws in the state of Iowa on what type of slides you can have. And so we're working through that. Here's some concept plans of the buildings that are proposed to be built. And talking with Brent today, I think these are pretty good renderings as far as what will actually be built. So it's a lot of open space, a lot of glass, you know, laminated beam-style construction, kind of chalet-like and fitting that winter park side of things. We have a positive staff recommendation. We brought the project, so I hope we would. Happy to answer any questions. It was approved unanimously at the 15th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Questions for Mark? Jerry?
Same question as before. What's the sidewalk access off of Middle Road Rec Trail?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I don't know that for some of this--
Mark, I can--
Yeah, go ahead, Brett.
Sorry, I'd be happy to answer that. Jerry, there is not sidewalk access off Middle, and that's simply because we only have one ticketed entry into the property. So there is sidewalk access via 23rd. So you would have to go Middle to 23rd and come in or go in. We are going to be adding a sidewalk on the east side of the lower fitness center parking lot that'll also provide you a secondary access from the west. But ultimately, we can't have a direct access from Middle Road without having to put another structure and admissions gate there.
Bill, do you have something?
I did. What are the species of trees around the perimeter of this pool?
So fair question. I don't know exactly, but there is a push underway by staff in our work with the Trees Committee to probably add some diversity in what we plant going forward, but I don't know. Brent, do you have that?
Just that we will not have, and I think to answer the question that Bill's going to be having, and you know, Decker has kind of stressed this with the ice rink to the point that leaves will not be an issue for either the pool or the ice rink.
They, leaves will not be an issue?
At least as close as we can, the kinds of trees that we're hoping we can put in here will not, as you know, we have difficulty with ice where the, as we're trying to make ice, where the leaves go down in and hamper the operation to make ice. So surely on that west side, we're going to limit what we can in terms of trees that shed leaves pretty strongly. But we will be talking and have been talking to Trees R Us about other trees around it that are more, I guess, diversified.
Well, maybe something low canopy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It's always been my experience, you never have trees around a pool or a car sales lot.
Yep. You're exactly right.
Greg?
Thank you.
Might be more pines than we think.
Yeah.
This is the first time I've seen the placement of the pool and everything, and it's obviously moved closer to the homes across the street. So lighting, are we going to be sensitive to directional lighting so that we're not--
So like with other projects, they'll have to submit a lighting plan, and that'll be reviewed by engineering staff. We require shrouds and downlighting, so there shouldn't be a lot of, you know, bleed off the property. Of course, if you have people in a pool, you need to be able to see them.
Oh, sure.
So some safety issues there. So the pool's going to have lights inside the pool.
Oh, absolutely.
You know--
Mark, for the most part, we are not adding any additional perimeter lighting on the, let's say, the north and east sides, especially the east side due to 23rd. All the lighting is interior to the pool, and we will, once operating hours are passed, the majority of those lights will be dimmed or turned off, only enough to keep up an appropriate level of security.
Okay, thank you.
And Greg, if you think about it, in the winter, when all the leaves are gone, isn't that a song? The ice rink is pretty bright. That moves over more into the interior of the park.
Sure, yeah.
And the summer, the pool is usually shut by 9, no later than 10. So we should probably have less light infiltration from a site perspective than we do today, even with the new, and we'll have new LED lighting, I assume, almost all the way around this.
Very nice. Thank you.
Nick, did you, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, thank you for all your efforts on this, everybody.
Nick, did you have any questions?
I do, yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. Brent, I believe the last time this was discussed, we were targeting a July timeframe. Can you give us an update on where we're at in the process of the bid process and everything?
Sure. The bids are currently, the project is currently out to bid. Sure. The bids are currently, the project is currently out to bid. We had held a pre-bid meeting a week ago. Had very good attendance, almost filled council chambers, getting a lot of interest from, you know, both general contractors and a lot of subs, even, you know, a few local ones that we weren't expecting because some of this is specialized, which would be good if they were able to get to work. We currently are planning for an April 11th bid, which would be a week from tomorrow. We are considering potentially extending that to weeks. Some of the vendors we're hearing are not getting pricing back to the contractors and the subcontractors as quickly as they need be, and we really don't want to rush that on the front end. We know we got a very tight construction window, but we really feel that, you know, maybe two weeks on the bidding end could really save us a lot of money. So we're going to make that final decision here shortly, and let the contractors know this week, you know, the next day or two. Either way, contract will be executed either end of April or very beginning of May, and then as soon as humanly possible, we expect contractor out there mobilized and starting demolition.
Great, thank you. And is there, Brent, this might be my ignorance to the process, but is there any, I don't know if incentive is the right word, but that, any way for us to promote local businesses to be engaged in this project because it is such a pivotal, you know, important project in the community?
Ultimately, I don't think we, unfortunately, with state code, I don't think we have the ability to give incentives unless council does pass an ordinance. I will say it's something that has been talked about regionally in the last couple of years, just at least among my peers. I believe, maybe it was last year or the year before, the city of Davenport passed an ordinance that allowed a preference to be given for local contractors within a certain threshold of a bid. So I think there was a case, or several cases, where some in-town contractors lost out to out-of-towns within, let's say, 1% of the bid. I think they were able to give the preference there. In this case, all the general contractors are local. Almost all the subs are. The only one that may or may not be that we expect is ultimately the pool contractor itself, and that's just because we don't have a, really a true commercial pool contractor in the area, at least not one that has done much work in the area. At the same time, there hasn't been many commercial pools, and definitely none of this size done in the area. Relying on a lot of the work that the Y has done with some of their buildings over the last couple of years to help us through that.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Mark or for Brent? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda as consent item G.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, take a look at the remaining consent agenda items. Is there any other consent agenda item that a particular council member would like to discuss at this time? Phil?
Consent agenda I. So we've gotten the first appeal, apparently, and they've been awarded $20,000 more than--
Mark, do you want to tackle I? 1120 Parkway?
Yeah, so that is, as the council mentioned, that is our first appeal under this new grant. I think we did have two under the last grant. Under the federal program, residents have the right to appeal the buyout cost. It's based on appraisal that we did in 2021. As we apply for the grant, they make us do appraisals at that time to apply for the grant. By the time the grant's awarded and we go out and start making purchase offers, a couple of years have gone by. So because of that, they're allowed to go out and provide us an alternate appeal. Has to be done by a licensed certified appraiser, which it was done, and the process allows us to either accept that alternate bid or stick with our offer or not buy the house at all. So that's the process of the grant that we're in. They have the right to appeal it. You do not have to accept that appeal.
And remind us again what's the federal share?
It's 100% federal and state money.
Other questions on any consent agenda item? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all those items for consideration on consent tomorrow night.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we do have an operational item to discuss this evening. This is items to appear at eight and nine, setting the public hearing on the maximum property tax levy. For this, we welcome our finance director, Jason Chat.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, tomorrow night at our regular council meeting, council will hold the first of two public hearings completing the budget process for fiscal year 2324. After the hearing, council will consider a resolution stating that property taxes levied for operations in FY 2324 shall not exceed $21,628,082. That is equivalent to a levy rate for operations of $7.85 per thousand of taxable value. You'll recall the same combination of levies in the current year is $7.80, so that does represent that nickel increase that we've talked about. At 785, the increase in taxes levied over last year is 3.96%. So interestingly, about 80% of that increase is directly attributable to added valuation of new construction. So another strong year of new value coming into the city. But because the levy rate represents an increase of greater than 2%, state law requires that the resolution be adopted and passed by two-thirds of the full council, so in our case, five of the seven council members. Importantly, and I want to really stress this tonight, and again tomorrow if necessary, passage of this resolution does not obligate council to adopt the budget and levy taxes at the proposed rate. Council has the option to levy less, but not more taxes than stated by this resolution, and that decision will follow the next public hearing that's scheduled for April 18th. The 785 levy rate includes only those taxes levied for operations, so when we couple that with the debt levy, the city's total levy rate per thousand of taxable value would be $12.70 as proposed. And finally, taxes collected in FY 2324 are assessed against property values from 2022, not the 2023 values that have recently been sent to property owners in town.
18 months, and those will be your new values?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions for Jason? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. I got my assessment, and I've heard from quite a few other people, and I was very, very comfortable with the nickel a couple of weeks ago. I'm not as comfortable with it now, so that's just the way I'm thinking of what effect this would have if we don't do the nickel. And I'm just looking for some input from my contemporaries and staff and whomever, mayor. But these are huge increases, and I know they don't start for 18 more months, but I just, not as, I'm not as comfortable as I was a couple of weeks ago. So I'll just throw that out.
Yeah, and I think on the 18th, certainly you can have, we'll have a robust discussion about that, I think, you know, where I fell. But I think a continued discussion until then. If you have, you know, anybody has further questions or wants to talk to Jason and staff and talk to each other, absolutely. I think, though, to Jason's point, we set the hearing at the maximum property tax levy, including that nickel, and then you'll decide on the 18th, after you have the two public hearings, whether or not you want to add the nickel.
Sure.
Awesome. Okay. Yes, Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, to Greg's point, I think, you know, we're all mindful of what our taxpayers are paying, and also I think the level of service that they respect and that they expect. And I think that what might be missing here is what the nickel does for us and for our community. So I think if we have a line, want to be supportive of staff and what they're trying to do, and we have prided ourselves for years of being a very lean operation. There may be a point at which, to Bill's point during the budget hearings, is the level of service in each department, what we expect and what it needs to be, and are we asking, you know, too much? So I think we, perhaps it would help me, certainly, if we drew a more clear line from the nickel to what we're buying, and then we can have that discussion, because it's not just about the nickel, it's about, you know, what domino effects are in it. So with respect, I might ask staff to help us connect those dots and see how we can look at and make that value decision.
Sure. In this case, the nickel is worth about $137,000 of property tax revenue. That's about $7 on that average home that we typically talk about. But for fiscal year 2324, we tied that nickel directly to the additional staff that was suggested for the Community Development Department, I believe in the planning area. So in this case, it's as simple as probably just not filling that position if we were to choose to stand down on the nickel increase.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Matt, other questions for Jason? All right. That's on our operational item.
But if we do not fill that staff position, then what's the impact on the service? And maybe that's, maybe that's not the question for tonight, but in two weeks--
It may not be, but if Mark wants to tackle it, I'm totally fine with that.
I see Mr. Plane leaning towards his microphone, so I will defer to him.
Mr. Plane?
In addition to the position, remember that we had advocated for the change of a code enforcement from a part-time to a full-time position as well, and we changed some of the library budget. So there's really a small component of the library, but the bulk of it would be the component parts at Community Development. I think the more salient point that you hit, Your Honor, is that we recommend that you take the action on the 1270 to keep it intact until the 18th. And you would have your discussion at the committee of the whole prior to the public hearing on the 18th, and then decide at that meeting whether you wish to adopt the budget with the nickel in or with the nickel out. And we can prepare, to Councilmember Nauman's point, a little more depth to the position, the positions, and to try and make sure the council fully understands it. And then one last point on the assessments that went out. We are preparing, going to be preparing, Jeff and Angie and team are creating some talking points for you all. It primarily pushes this to the assessor where it belongs, but people don't understand what the effect on the taxes are. And if you just used the change that just happened and saw the decrease in the taxable value available to us, that's a point for you to be able to articulate, because we don't know what that rollback is going to be. We've heard it might go as low as 46, and then we don't know what legislation, either this session or next session, would come into play before that budget got adopted next year to affect those taxes. But theoretically, the assessments could have gone up $60,000, $70,000, and between a rollback and a levy change by us, it could be negligible. There could be no taxable value increase and--
With the city portion?
Or any portion, based on what the legislature might do. Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, in the proposal by Senator Dawson, with the growth rate and the capping, there might not be any taxable value or very little taxable value available to the city. So there's so many unknowns out there that people don't comprehend, but it's important to point out that we're only 39% of that total taxable value. And I'm not sure most people even understand what taxable value is. So--
There is two thoughts. One, on the assessor's website is the letter that I forwarded to staff, which is somewhat helpful in that it does explain the reason for the increase and the percentage increases in the categories of property. I sent, Jerry was in on an email that somebody was asking some questions, so I sent that out, and we can send that out, or you can send people to that spot. And number two, Jason, relative to our budget discussion coming up on the 18th, one other question might be, if it's really only $137,000, it sounds like a lot of money, but in a budget like ours, it's really not that much. Is there a way to fund that position for the year with existing fund balances? You don't have to answer that now. Just a thing to think about. You could, maybe, and you'll report back, I'm sure. This is how it could be done if council wanted to do it, and here are the ramifications of that decision.
Sure.
Okay. Other questions for Jason? Okay, those are on our items to appear, so we don't have to vote them there. We'll just have them remain. Any other items for mayor and council today? I don't have anything to add. Anybody? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
We stand adjourned. We'll see you here tomorrow, 7 o'clock PM, please.